Wonderful, okay, we are back in session. So, we're gonna move on to item number eight, unfinished business and business arising from the minutes. The recommendation on the floor is regarding the implementation of fully digital council proceedings. I'd like to make the recommendation that we receive this for discussion. Can I get a second?
Oh, seconded to discussion.
There you go, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna receive for discussions. So, let's see, the report has been put back on the floor. This is from March 12th. It's the discussion of moving to purchasing tablets for council agendas and stuff, for members of council, rather than printing the hard copy for council, but the hard copies would still, of course, be available to the public. This item has been back multiple times, and I think that we've been having a really great discussion about it. And I know there's a few other more questions and concerns that have been brought up by members of council that we'd like to discuss this evening.
So, between the last meeting and this meeting, I did, Councilor Rabel and I both have a box at home full of all the pages of everything we've had. So, I went through, and in 2024, my total number of pages is 1,0786, which aligns with Councilor Rabel's. Multiplying that by five would be 8,930 pages annually by council. So, my question is to staff, where is this 50,000-page number coming from? Because it seems to be higher than a multiple of five of what we've actually received.
Well, we're using off the sample size based off of our current agenda packages. So, we've already had four agenda packages this year that are over 175 pages.
So, my follow-up on that is, 175 pages in an agenda, 24 meetings a year.
Those be special meetings?
Okay, let's call it 26 meetings a year, because that's how many we have.
We've already had four special meetings this year. So, I would say, let's go with...
Which were one page each. So, I guess my question is, looking at 2024, right? Because that's our dataset at 8,930 pages annually. At black and white, that'd be $893 for all of council. Or if we were to print everything in color, which we've already had a motion previously that we would not be printing in color, that'd be $3,600 annually, which is less than half of, well, far less than half. It's actually cheaper than the cost of the tablets. So, also in the last meeting, you did provide us with a billing statement. I'm curious if the Village Voice and all of those documents that were printed for our public hearings regarding our budget and our special one, the other one that we had as well, are those included in our council printing?
No, they are.
They're included in our administrative printing.
So, they are included in the administrative printing. So, would that mean that going to these tablets, assuming we print 50,000 pages annually, we would end the production of the Village Voice and, well, because that would be, that's included in this number here? So, you're saying that we're gonna eliminate 50,000 pages annually, but the Village Voice is included in that 50,000 pages?
No, that was based off of the invoice, not the inclusion there. The inclusion is based off the sample size of our already preceding agenda packages. But that invoice that was presented was just for the billing period of February, March.
So, just, Councilor Whittle has a question. Councilor Whittle?
Yeah, so, the other thing, in respect to Councilor Wall's numbers for action pages that we've received and taken home, I don't think that accounts for when council procedures or council agendas get printed, and then there's an omission or an error, and they have to be reprinted, which has happened to us multiple times in the past. With going to the digital form, you know, it allows for those changes to come to us digitally. So, then if the package gets printed, we're not having to reprint it again. I honestly think, in all honesty, the way going forward on this is more looking at a hybrid model. Because ultimately, at the end of the day going forward, not everybody's gonna be happy with digital. Not everybody's gonna be happy with just paper. And I think where the compromise is gonna be is to go to a hybrid situation. And the other thing is going forward with future councils, depending on what age range gets elected to council, what they feel more comfortable with. If you get another younger council, or a technically, you know, enabled council, they might like the digital more. You get an older council, they, you know, they want the paper. So, I think the ultimate solution, at the end of the day, is gonna be looking at more of a hybrid model of this, where we can save, because ultimately, if you're, you know, you look at the cost of printing over the course of a four-year term versus the cost of a tablet, you know, it's gonna save you some money, especially when you have any changes and stuff like that. The other part of it is, I think currently, right now, if we want devices, we're able to expense those, and they get climbed under our SOPHIE and that kind of stuff. So, we do have, currently have an option to go digital if we chose. I know Mayor Beach does a lot first off digitally. I do as well, if I'm just dealing with outdated technology now, so that's where my issue is on it. But, yeah, to Councilor Wall's point, you know, depending on the year, and to staff's point, you know, depending on the year, that number's gonna fluctuate. What we need to do is look down the road, and if we wanna go to a digital voting system down the road, and that's our ultimate goal, then it makes sense to go digital, right? Just like the regional district does. But no different, I believe, the regional district council member or directors have the ability to ask for a paper agenda as well, if they would like it. But your primary copy is digital, so. But I think a hybrid is definitely where we gotta go.
And to add on to Councilor's point, the vote for the Mutant Manager On-Suite Package, which was respectively requested by public office, that's come back at $2,500.
And that's for, like, eScribe, right?
Yeah, digital voting record.
Yeah, okay. And so, that's $2,500 a year for licensing?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Because that is definitely something that this council has expressed interest in. And I know it's great for transparency. I love it with the PRRD. I find that voting is quite easy. It's right there. You can see who voted, how the end vote comes up on the screen for the public. I know that many councils within the region have been moving to the eScribe system for that reason, for the transparency. I think Councilor Whittle makes a...
Oh, Mayor, sorry. To your point, too, on the eScribe, it also eliminates that whole, and the councils had issues with it in the past, or, you know, been accused of it in the past, that, you know, you wait to see where other people vote, and then you vote in favor, and, you know, so it gives you more of that autonomous and, you know, that anonymity, I guess. Everyone still sees what you vote, but you don't have that pressure to feel that pressure to vote in line with anybody else, if that were ever to be the case, where you have very dominant, you know, mayor or, you know, weaker personalities. So, it gives everybody that, that free, a little more freedom as well, I guess, and more comfortability voting to how they truly feel, instead of having to justify sticking your hand up all the time.
Yeah, I do really like the idea of the hybrid model. I think that is something that we could actually do in phases. And then, you know, have that rather than be one large expense within one year. We could phase it over time, so that by a projected year, we are fully eScribe system, where we can do digital voting. And, you know, I think digital voting is the way of the future, and many are already currently doing it. And so, we would just be really getting in line with what a lot of other municipalities are currently doing. Yes, Councilor Rabel?
Just a question of specific technical nature. In regards to the eScribe voting system, does that require a tablet? Or can that be hosted on any digital device?
Any digital device.
Okay.
So, a tablet, smartphone?
Laptop, yeah.
I didn't think that was on an internet or data connection.
Yeah, okay.
Just to go right to the point, my preference, firstly, is paper. I don't wanna preclude or prevent another council member from having a digital device. You know, that's their preference. My preference is paper. I prefer paper for the remainder of the term that I'm currently serving. I don't wanna prevent somebody from having that for whatever reason. Yeah, it's paper. Paper is my, one of my preferences, for sure.
And so, I guess, like, the real question is, is there still interest amongst this council in moving to the eScribe digital voting system? Because if there is, then that is something that we can look at. And then, as I said, doing like a multi-tier system of getting tablets, and then looking into the licensing and sort of creating a multi-tier budget. Or are you wanting it to remain the same? So, that would sort of be my question I'm putting out to all of you.
On your question you're putting out to us, I saw where it was going. I believe that four of the five counselors have a phone. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And the eScribe system would be compatible with our smartphones?
Yes.
Okay, because I also prefer paper. I know you don't.
That's fine, I just make it work.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, I would actually potentially present, well, this committee, the whole. I would like it to come back to regular council meeting. I'll make a motion later, I'm not making it now. That, we do proceed with the eScribe system. So, we have a digital record for voting, and that makes it more transparent for the public as well. And I like the idea of the hybrid thing. Because from the hybrid... Me, I would just have my phone and vote from there.
The hybrid option would be very easy to implement. All it would ask is any respective public officials that would request a physical copy of the agenda. They outline that via email or communication before the council meetings. So, we print the appropriate copies, and we can save on those printing and administrative costs.
As per procedure, we would have to change the procedure by law.
Yep, would.
Yeah. And then with that, though, we would also need to look at technology updates. I know that their, Councilor Rabel has expressed issues with his device. And so, we would definitely have to make sure that going forward, all of us have the appropriate technology to handle the system that is needed for eScribe on our phones, or our laptops, or vice versa. I'm gonna go to Councilor Rabel and then Councilor Wall.
Kind of two parts. So, hypothetical, because we wanna be transparent and display the costs. And each counselor and person, anyways, each counselor has a buddy line, is my understanding. And, you know, for example, the cellphone cost and the bills, that would probably be portioned out to each respective counselor, is my assumption. Therefore, we could open the door to say, you know, two, three counselors, five counselors, whatever, can purchase tablets or whatnot, or some might not. So, would it be, for staff, if I may, through the chair? If, is it, would it be more administrative burden? Or how would it be able to parcel it out to say, okay, this counselor gets it printed, these are the assumed printed costs? I know that gets really niche, because you'd have to divide by the number of pages, which gets kind of laborious, because we're trying to avoid excessive labor. But then, when they purchase a tablet, or have a cellphone plan, or all this other stuff, that's already in their budget line. So, we could parcel that out, as Sophie and Councilor Whittle had mentioned. Would that be too much, would that be excessively laborious for staff? Or is that a practice that's already presumed, or already taking place?
It's already taking place, just with our communication goes out with the agenda packages. So, if we just get a quick reply saying, I prefer a, respectively, a printed physical copy, that would be suitable in the institution?
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, it's a directly related follow-up. So, therefore, the default would be tablets and digital. If a counselor wished to have a printed copy, they would have to by a certain deadline, send an email every single meeting, every single time.
We're just letting the, printing off two agenda packages is much less laborious than printing off seven agenda packages.
But at the core, my question is, whatever respective member wishes to have a printed copy, will have to do that for every single meeting by email, every single time. Thank you.
Councilor Whittle?
Yeah, so, I personally would be in favor of going to the digital system. Like myself, I have reading issues, I'm dyslexic, right? So, I find it much easier to read from a digital format than I do from a paper format. Just because my eyes like to see mazes and trails through paper formats, and it's a struggle. I can read much better off a digital format. So, for those reasons, and the fact that, you know, digital is the way we're going, it cuts down immensely on the printing cost, and I do like the idea of moving to an eScribe system. The other thing that's nice about it is, with using it on the regional district side of things, is going to an eScribe system, a lot of that background documentation that counselors have asked for or account meetings that staff said to go back and send to you, and that kind of stuff, can be made more readily available to us. So, if we wanna see historical agreements on, you know, what the water agreements have been, I know I'm kicking the can here, but water agreements for the last, you know, six years, or 10 years, or whatever, it's easy enough for staff to provide a link within that digital format for us to review those documents. Same with all the bylaws and that kind of stuff, versus having to come down and say, hey, I'd like to see this bylaw, and oh, you gotta go here, you gotta go here. They can actually include a lot more of that background information, and we can actually have a lot more in-depth agenda and packages. Because now, without having to print, you know, 150-page, you know, presentation, we can receive a link to it, we can see it as it's meant to be seen on the digital device in front of us. And we can also, like I said, have access to that historical data and bylaw information without having to do a multitude of printing. And it's readily available. We don't have to dive through 37 links and dig around on a website for it. It's included in the agenda package. So, it is really nice, from that perspective, to be able to find background information and get more information on the projects or on a particular topic.
Yeah. Councilor Wall?
I do have a concern, and my concern is that I will always prefer a physical copy. So, to have to send an email every time for every meeting, sounds kind of onerous, considering the staff would already know that, myself, I would always want it physical. Is that an expectation of staff? That, that a counselor would have to request a copy of the agenda every time an agenda is required?
Or could it just be that that counselor puts it right from the...
They could put it, almost as if the system was a standing offer.
Yeah.
An explanation that explicitly going forward for the pertaining time period. This is the expectation.
Yeah. And like, that could just be put in, put in writing, a one initial email, like, going forward for my term of blah blah. I would much, I would prefer, or I expect to have a printed copy available to me. And then that would very, that could meet the requirement right there, rather than an email every time you've established the expected expectation. Yes?
Okay, putting a bow on it, it sounds like there might need to be a change to the council procedure by law, potentially. It sounds like there might be some needing to move around some budget lines, potentially. Well, depending, no, not really. It's within the administrative...
The council procedure by law is most effective, obviously.
So, that's really all that's required at this point?
No budget amendment.
Okay.
Has that been budgeted for them?
No, it's budgeted just through our operational administrative costs.
Yeah. So, what, I think it would be the best way to elaborate, Mr. Savalski, would be to create a report looking at the hybrid model. So, including the licensing fee, including the cost of the tablets, and just giving us an overall expectation of costs. And then, council can then decide if that's something that they would like to go forward with, or if they would like to tier it and start by doing, you know, procedural bylaws, and then tablet purchasing, and that, you know, like, just kind of looking at it from that perspective. So, that would be my recommendation for this council. So, I'm gonna like to put the recommendation on the floor that's...
Mayor Beach?
Yeah?
And just before you, could we potentially add to that where the cost, like, where the money's coming from financed?
Yes.
So, where the potential savings are versus what budget line, or whatever it comes of?
Yeah, okay. So, I'd like to make a recommendation that staff bring back a report with a hybrid model, including the cost of the eScribe licensing, as well as show the financial reflection of where that, those funds would be coming from within our budget. Okay, can I get a second on that?
Seconded.
Seceded by Councilor Whittle, thank you. Discussion regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, I'm gonna call a question then. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Okay, awesome, wonderful. I look forward to seeing that. So, we're gonna move on to new business done, correspondence done, resolutions done, so moving on to bylaws. Dying over here, sorry. Recommendation that bylaw number 106 to consolidated municipal fees and bylaws charges is adopted. Can I get a second there?
Second.
Seceded by Councilor Whittle, thank you. Discussion regarding adoption. Councilor Wall?
I will be voting opposed, as I believe across the board, user fees increase is unjustified at this time.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the question then. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Would you like your opposed noted?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 12.2, recommend that council gives the first reading to bylaw number 1076 tax rate bylaw 2025. Can I get a second there?
Second.
Seceded by Councilor Whittle, thank you. Discussion? Councilor Rabel? I know, you're gonna be voting opposed, because you do agree with raising tax rates, and we'd like to look at other options.
Yes, I am, well, as previously discussed, and as we see across the board, tax rate increases are a sledgehammer to crack a peanut. I think in the future, we should certainly look into, obviously, this would be a process, but permissive tax exemptions, these more tangible, real-world things that we can do to incentivize business and investment in the community that has tangible benefits to folks with businesses. And I think that's an absolutely wonderful approach, but that would be combined with a whole overview and the various subcommittees and the bylaw and zoning revisions. It's something for the future, for sure. But I never feel that I've ever voted in favor of a tax increase. So, that is why I would be voting in opposition.
Thank you. Councilor Wall?
I will also be voting in opposition to this tax increase, because I believe 7% across the board, regardless of industry, regardless of business, and regardless of the home, especially at a time when PC assessments have increased in the municipality as well. Basically, across the board, is unfair to our taxpayers, because I, we're not seeing a large increase, we're not seeing a 7% increase in services provided to the community. Instead, we're seeing services remain constant, or stagnate, or decrease in some cases. And I don't think a tax increase would be fair. I think it should be more service for more money, or less service for less money, not more taxes with less service provided.
Councilor Whittle?
Yeah, within respect to what my colleagues have said, I'm gonna be voting in favor of this tax increase, because one of the ways that we can keep our taxes down, and the reason why we're able to go with the 7% increase instead of potentially looking at a higher increase, is because we've had to increase service fees. With the increase to service fees, that's people that are using those systems that are paying for them. So, then that burden is reduced off our taxpayers. The other thing is, for sustaining the community, as it is, we're not putting money, very much money, or if any money away this year, for that infrastructure replacement and capital replacement. So, we don't really have a choice in the matter. This is to keep the lights on and keep us going at our current levels. With moving forward, you know, with some of the presentations that we've had tonight, and some of the development that we can do in the future, in the future, we definitely have an opportunity to develop more business and look at tax incentives to bring business to boost COPIs, so that in the future, we might not have to look at tax increases, or at least a lot more modest ones. But for the short-term sustainability of the community, I'll be voting in favor of this. With, again, encouraging staff to, and council to look into future opportunities, which, from the presentation tonight, looks like we might have some good opportunities in the future within the village.
Wonderful. Okay. On that note, I'm gonna call a question then. All those in favor?
In favor.
And all those opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Would you like your opposedes noted?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Whittle, do you mind reading recommendation number two?
Yeah, just give me one moment. Bye. Okay, recommendation number two. That council could give second reading to bylaw number 1076 tax rate bylaw 2025.
Can I get a second there?
Second.
Seceded by Councilor Johnson, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Would you like your opposed noted?
Yes.
Thank you. Recommendation number three, that council give third reading to bylaw number 1076 tax rate bylaw 2025. Can I get a second there?
Second.
Seceded by Councilor Whittle. Discussion?
In regards to this, is final adoption to happen at the next council meeting? Or is this to presume adoption at this time?
No, this is just first, second, and third reading. There needs to be a 24-hour waiting period between when the first, second, and third reading is read, and then adoption takes place. We had originally discussed talks talking about having a special council meeting tomorrow. Due to the time, that would not actually work within the 24-hour period. So, we are going to be scheduling a special meeting at some point before May 16th, which does create a bit of issue with us reading at NCLPA, but we're all gonna figure it out.
We have weekends.
We can have weekends, and that's all part of the joke. Yes?
And then, further to that, I recall that there's some sort of deadline with the province.
Yes, May 16th. May 16th.
Okay, that's what's kind of in the back of my head, okay.
Mayor Beach?
Yes?
Would it be possible, since we got everybody here, and I know we had made a special accommodation initially for tomorrow night's meeting, as it was just to approve the final reading of the bylaw, could we just reschedule that for Friday? And then it's done with the same, with the same accommodation that members can zoom in on that, as it's gonna be a fairly, fairly short meeting?
Friday's not going to work. I know these two both have schnitzel dinner, and I also have plans Friday evening. I apologize.
What about Saturday?
Saturday?
Well, I'm working all day Saturday, so Saturday works. I'm at the museum.
Yeah, but the reality is, it's gonna be a 15-minute meeting, and we're holding up staff and administration's time for a 15-minute meeting. And we're coming up on that deadline here within the next week, right? So...
I'm working all day Saturday, so that works for me, yes.
Hypothetically, and we have kind of touched on this previously, if we were all, and this is tricky, if we were all to attend remotely, or some portion of us would attend here, because we were limited by the council procedure by law, and the legal community charter as well.
Yeah.
Anyways, long and the short is, if a majority attends remotely, how does that work? Because we'd have to override the council procedure by law. This was the kerfuffle last time.
Which we had a motion in the proceeding meeting regarding that.
Yeah.
To...
To override the three people attending via Zoom.
Via Zoom.
Yeah.
And that passed unanimously.
That was a unanimous decision.
Okay. And then, how would the public be able to observe the meeting happening live? So that the public can inspect it?
None of our meetings are live. So, they're public meetings, people can attend, but they're not live stream meetings.
No, like, they could come and...
Oh, yes, yes.
Observe it, observe the proceedings, as any member of the public can do. So, there's still that option, okay.
Yeah, because Mr. Savalski and Chair, or somebody would have us, one of us would have to be in the room to chair the meeting, and Mr. Savalski would have to be present in council chambers, because he still have to have a place for a meeting.
Yes.
All we did with that amendment is we just allowed, you know, more than two of us to zoom in on it. But you'd still need somebody, either the mayor or the mayor designate, in the council chambers, along with a staff member, in order to record the minutes and have an actual place. So, if the public did want to come, they do have a place to come.
Correct.
Councilor Wall?
I am not available Saturday. Even via Zoom.
Okay. Well, as long as I have at least three of us here, then, yeah. So, I'm available Saturday. Councilor Whittle, are you available Saturday?
Yeah, I'd prefer to do it in the morning, in all honesty, and get it out of the way.
I start work with the museum at 7:00 a.m. I've heard that, Ray.
So, question, would it be improper to hold the meeting at like 6:30 in the morning in council chambers?
Dude, no! No!
We don't have any prohibitions in the council procedure by law that wouldn't allow that. I just don't know if that's something that everyone in public office would be agreeable to.
No!
We did a meeting at 5:00 a.m. once, I remember that. There was a 7:00 a.m. meeting or something absurd.
As long as we follow the notice requirements, we would be allowed to do that. But again, I don't want us to be...
I start work at 7:00 a.m. for the museum.
I would object to starting early in the morning on Saturday, as the Legion typically closes out around 2:00.
Can't we just do it Saturday evening?
That's an option. Sunday's an option, Monday's...
What if we did it Saturday at 5:00 p.m.? I'm done working for the museum at 4:00. And do it at 4:00?
Yeah.
Saturday, you're what?
I pee off at 5:00, and I do it from the bell door.
So, like, we could do it at 4:00 p.m.
Oh, no, we lost.
He hung up on me. Where'd he go?
Yeah, 4:00 p.m. on Saturday would work, because then you guys could finish up at the museum, come over, do the meeting, and then staff started to go for Monday. We're not delaying staff.
So, Saturday potentially at some...
I didn't hang up when you, you hung up on me. What are you talking about?
Ooh, I just, yeah, I was looking at a calendar.
Okay, we're looking at Saturday at 4:00 p.m. Does that time work for you, Councilor Johnson? Okay, we're looking at Saturday at four PM. Does that time work for you, Councilor Johnson?
Yes, it does.
Yes, okay. Saturday at four, all right. So, let's do the third reading, and then I'll make the, I'll call that. Okay? So I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor of giving the third reading bylaw number one zero seven six, tax bylaw rate. All those in favor?
In favor.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed noted?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'll be calling a special meeting for Saturday, the tenth of May, at four PM for adoption of bylaw number one zero seven six, tax rate. Can I get a second there on that meeting?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Woodall. Discussion? Yes, Councilor Wall?
I have an appointment. You will be unable to attend.
Thank you for giving us notice and letting us know.
You will also be unable to attend.
I'm trying to recollect, but potentially I cannot guarantee my attendance at this meeting. However, I wish the best for the proceedings.
You have a call question? All those in favor?
In favor.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Would you like your opposed noted?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to administrative reports. We are getting like super late into the evening, and I do kind of want to be one of those people who just wants to accept them all for information because we've all read them. Can I say that? And here's my Councilor. Okay, any discussion? All the.
I.
Thank you to all of our community organizations for their constant work.
All those in favor?
In favor.
Thank you.
Oh, we kind of blew through the EDO one, but we can always talk about it in the future.
We can talk about it in the future, absolutely.
We brought forward the thing. We have the thing.
And this is the first month of committee of the meetings where we do have an inclusion of the final experience report, so please do just give a moment to review that when you have a little bit of free time and.
Sounds good. Okay, moving on to council calendars. So, May tenth will be when that next special meeting is. And, yep. Sounds good. If you're available on Saturday, the museum is doing their grand opening, they have a performance. There will be starting with a pancake breakfast as always, taking place at the seniors hall, drug sale, hosting kids games, and by the sounds of things, they're gonna have Little Showmshine down on the main street again like they did last year. So if you're available, please come on out. Councilor Johnson, are you gonna be there?
Yes, I imagine I'll be there most of the day.
Okay, perfect.
For the day anyway.
Good, good, good. Okay, awesome. So we're gonna move on to council reports. So Councilor Johnson, what have you been up to?
I've been doing my, I do a meeting with museums for a week itself.
Oh, yeah, right. I've heard about that. Okay, wonderful. Okay, and Councilor Ravel?
Lots of fun stuff is in the works for the summer, but at this time, nothing completely ready to report. However, there is the Legion, the Legion is hosting a schnitzel night. We've been working diligently to replace the stove and get everything up to snuff, and so. And thank you to staff in answering the questions regarding the installation of the gas stove, that it's not requiring a permit through the village, however, it does require a permit through the gas fitter and the various provincial authorities that oversee it. Anyways, yes, lots of great things happening, and we had to host a burger night last month, which was somewhat attended, but there's the schnitzel crowd that really loves schnitzels, so. Fun, exciting stuff. I must admit, in my volunteer hours, that is taking the lion's share of those volunteer hours, but you know, there's some exciting stuff going on with the other portfolios. My understanding is the Northern Trails did have an AGM. I was unable to attend that in Fort St. John. That was very recently. But I can certainly bring back some information as to how that works. But my understanding is that it's essentially museums coordinating together to kind of weave the history of the North. And it's partnerships, it's good partnerships and discussions.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
Northern Trails.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you are doing with the Pooch Kupi Legion. I had a resident come and talk to me just the other day, and they're, they're very excited with all the things that you guys have done.
Thank you.
Councilor Wall?
Did we not have a special meeting between our last meeting and this one?
People heard this.
I attended the special meeting.
Oh, you're funny.
Well.
Got it, sounds good.
So, I did come in contact with Site C people. They are having no more meetings as the reservoir is filling and the dam is complete. So, the portfolio I hold for Site C is kind of irrelevant because they had their last meeting in November. Like, last meeting ever.
I think it's gonna be transitioning to the legacy.
Okay. Oh, potentially, okay.
Yeah, so hold off on any of that because I think it is going to be transitioning to managing that.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
I mean, I was like, I was thinking, I potentially missed the boat. I get, I become the liaison and maybe have the last meeting right, or now it's done. But in regards to Site C, they are selling off assets right now, which include portions of the work camp and a lot of other things happening at Site C, so any businesses, or potentially even farmers, or government organizations are looking at buying accommodations, or potentially, or potential equipment, things like that, that is an ongoing process through Site C, which I think may come in handy regarding our administration in greater blades than what not.
Are you able to provide specifics as to how the lots will be portioned, or is that a developing piece?
As far as I'm aware, right now, the lots regarding the building are quite large, so they're, they're trying to sell the entire camp as one piece and lots of assets. But if they are to fail to, like, for example, they have like, they gave me a number, I think it was three or five thousand beds, but I, I have a.
Just in case.
Just in case. So, as of right now, I don't think it's likely, I don't want to speak on behalf of Hydro or anyone else, but I don't see it being likely that someone would want three to five thousand twin beds all the same, all at once. So if they're unsuccessful in selling in these large lots, they will be portioned down into smaller lots to see how they go. And that's an ongoing process. I'm not exactly sure. I did, I did ask the board still for the Legion, and they're like, do you want the whole kitchen? The whole building, right? So anyways, just information that I think would be relevant to staff and the public. Yes, regarding the Legion, the next general membership meeting or for the public would be on thirty-first of May. So that's not going to be the Saturday because I'm unavailable, and the AGM will be happening in June. There's one other thing. I always forget one thing. Oh, I wasn't able to attend the South Peace Health Services meeting that happened at the college, unfortunately. There is a bit of conflict there.
They installed a new sign. With heavy construction, they put a new Voltris House sign on the front.
Yeah, oh, that's correct. Oh, I do have a little bit to report on, on that. So earlier this year, they were nearly at capacity in Voltris House, which is kind of a milestone because well, that means people are using it, starting to know. So if you know anyone who needs medical services here in Dawson Creek, let them know if they live in the area.
Wonderful. Yes, Councilor Ravel?
In regards to the members' offices, portfolio of PC Hydro, if the portfolio, or sorry, at Site C, transitions to some legacy project, is it assumed that the member opposite would continue with such a portfolio, or would it need to come back to the?
It would definitely have to come back, and then it would be reviewed whether or not it's a liaison position or if it's a staff. And so at that point in time, once we get more information from them, then that conversation would collectively happen.
Information for what meetings?
Uh, well, yeah, yeah, basically. Okay, perfect. All right, Councilor Woodall, you're up.
Well, unfortunately, I haven't been able to do a whole heck of a lot due to health concerns. It's lost a little bit, so. Hopefully, get some stuff organized during the next couple of weeks.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, I'm just quickly kind of going through this, so I'm gonna type all this out and send it to you because I didn't really have one available last time. I was having a crazy week, and you're going to find out why. April twenty-third, I attended the Northern Lights College rodeo send-off event that was held to send off the rodeo team as they move into the provincial finals, so congratulations to them, and we wish them all the best as they compete. April twenty-fourth, I attended the Pooch Kupi Public Library Board Meeting, and just really kind of checked in with them. It was really nice to see them all again. And I sat on that board for seven years, and it was nice to kind of be back in with my old, my old crew. The Pooch Kupi Public Library.
The Pooch Kupi Public Library.
Yeah. I then held the PRD Scholarship Committee meeting, as I'm the chair of the committee, on the twenty-fifth April. Twenty-sixth, I attended the Pooch Kupi Food Bank meeting. And, Miss, Councilor Woodall, you're the liaison for that, right?
Yes. Yes. I'm the second.
Oh, thank you so much, Councilor Johnson. Okay, I will let you know when the next meeting is, and hopefully, if you're feeling better, you will be able to make it. On April twenty-eighth, I attended the quarterly advisory committee meeting with Northwood Wellness Center. They have begun groundwork there. I don't know if you've seen, they've got excavators out there, and they've brought in a bunch of dirt and gravel. There's now a sign up there. Synergy Corporation is the one that is engineering that, and so they are very, very excited. And the groundbreaking is gonna be happening sometime in June, so I will let you guys know when that, that date is. We've been flip flopping back and forth on the date for that.
But they've broken the ground.
Yeah, right? I know, now they're breaking it again. On April twenty-ninth, I attended the, the Chamber of Commerce Conference in Fort St. John, Creating Energy. It was super interesting. It was so cool. One of our very own forefront energy was one of the panelists there, so they were representing Pooch Kupi up on the stage, which is so neat. And they were talking about a lot of the work that they're not only doing in the community, but within the province. And it was, I totally, it was like a mum moment when your kid gets a soccer prize. I was like, I know them. They come from where I am. So it was, it was a fantastic day, and it was so nice to connect with, you know, many of our oil and gas leaders. And there were multiple different representations there between municipalities, Chamber of Commerce, Community Futures, oil and gas. It was a phenomenal day. I actually would love to go again next year. This is something they do every year. And I cannot stress how beneficial it should be for you guys to ever be able to attend it, although it's really, really, really cool. Then, on April thirtieth, I attended the broadband and internet mobility committee meeting through the PRD. I attended the Oventive luncheon, which you were both at, forgot to mention.
Oh, we did. Did we have a meeting that night, though?
Yes.
I think we did.
I don't remember. I don't even know. And then I attended the special meeting that was that, that evening where I didn't give my things, because I had a crazy day. On May first, I attended the, the board meeting with the PRRD. Now, a couple of things that did come from the PRD. One thing that came up was a pilot program for employing doctors as municipal employees.
Oh, yeah.
This has come forward, so there was a recommendation that the regional board authorized to have to investigate the city of Callwood's pilot program regarding hiring doctors as municipal employees, and then further that the regional board receive a report regarding the program. This was voted on and accepted. They are going to be going forward with looking into this pilot program in the city of Dawson Creek. And there is potentially interest in the city of Fort St. John. I will keep you all privy as it gets, information comes back. I've never heard of it.
I haven't seen it on the news.
I'm gonna be honest, I was not super in favor of it because I just feel it's another way that the taxpayers are being taxed again for healthcare when they're already paying healthcare taxes as well. So I'm not super supportive of it at this point, but I do understand that we are at such a doctor crutch that we are trying to do as inventive as possible. Yes.
Regarding, regarding that, so right now, the municipal taxpayers paying a portion of the taxes towards the new hospital and funding the current hospital, assuming it's open all the time and assuming it's fully staffed, which it's not, it isn't, and hasn't been for a long time. If we all of a sudden end up in part of this program as part of the RD, are our rate payers potentially going to be paying through the municipal property taxes for a doctor, and then through the same taxes to Northern Health for the physician of the doctor, and like.
I know, it's very convoluted, and that's why I'm gonna be keeping you guys privy as this information is rolled out.
Is it, was that something that came up, though? Is the concern that could be doubled, like right now, or are we?
Yes, I brought the concern forward, and as, as I said, at this point in time, there's a lot of concern regarding doctor shortages. And they have seen that the health authority has helped cover some of those costs of hiring them as municipal employees, that is something that they're looking forward, looking into, as I brought that concern forward as well. Yes, Councilor Woodall?
Yes, I don't, I can't support that. It's, it's very much the province downloading its responsibility back on municipalities again, and onto our tax base, and our taxpayers. And really, at the end of the day, it's doctor shortage. It doesn't matter who's employing them. We need more of them. So I think it's just a way of, it's essentially, you know, being relieved of some of their burden of having to fork over the finances for a doctor. And, yeah, still, it's not something that I would support.
Yeah, so I will definitely, as I said, I share all the same concerns as, as you, and I, I will be continuing to advocate those concerns forward table. As information is rolled out, once this report is completed, I will be bringing it in front of all of you so you can have a look at it and sort of see what could potentially be coming out. But right now, the vote was to investigate it, so that's what they're currently doing.
I understand that that might be needed in certain circumstances, as an emergency temporary stockpile to have doctors as municipal employees. However, the funding, as everyone's discussing, you know, following municipal taxpayers who are already paying the help transfers to the province. But the other piece too is, if there were, like, to Councilor Woodall's point, if there were enough doctors to go around, it wouldn't be, you know, the pay issue. It's the doctors wanting to, I'm not very understanding of exactly how that would work, but.
I'll let you know when I figure it out. Yeah.
Going, going back on, on that, I, I have worked in healthcare, and at the end of the day, I, I, it's, the issue isn't that the funding isn't there. The, if, there is enough money to hire, and they budget in such a way that they could fill all the positions.
Yeah.
They have to.
They have to. The problem isn't there isn't enough money. The problem, as Councilor Woodall says, and I a hundred percent agree, is there isn't enough doctors. So, I really don't see how this will change anything.
I don't know how, what to know. As I said, I was as, yeah, it was very, it was very interesting, so. I got, we have so many things. We'll talk about it at a later date.
No, my joke, comment.
Okay, no, I kind of.
Let's reopen the Pooch Hospital. The municipal service, we'll hire all the doctors we can.
Another really cool thing that did happen is that Kelly Lake did approve a piece from her regional district regarding zoning of their area, and they were approved for rezoning a portion of Kelly Lake to allow the building of twelve, of a twelve housing unit. So the rezoning has been approved, so congratulations to Kelly Lake First Nations, and they're very, very excited, so. I'm, I'm excited to see more work happening in Kelly Lake, and that's, that's really, really cool.
Is the technicality behind that a variance for a specific parcel to have an accommodation of twelve dwelling units?
Yeah, it was that the regional board gave the piece for a regional district zoning amendment to their bylaws, rezoning a three-point-six hectare portion of the subject property.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah.
So, in that regard, I understand that Kelly Lake First Nation has a vast area as part of the land claim, which includes Pooch Kupi and Fort St. John and Grandbury, and a large, a very large area. Is the PRD.
If you think about Kelly Lake River, Doak River.
Kelly Lake does as well.
Oh, okay.
They, they claim all the way almost Prince George, and then up almost Fort Nelson.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I haven't seen that, so.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious, though, the rezoning, does that include the entire area that is claimed, or just?
No, no, it's, it's just, it's a thirty-six hectare portion with, three-point-six hectare portion, sorry, between Kelly Lake as it currently is.
It's a parcel. That's what I was getting at. It's, yeah, they want a specific project, a specific apartment unit.
But it doesn't affect our zoning, or anything here, please.
No, 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 it doesn't. Um, May fifth was Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women Grooming to Spirit Day. I did attend the march and just really spent time with, you know, members of our, of our community that have been severely impacted by missing and murdered indigenous women within the community. I spent time with different members there, elders. Um, I spent time with, um, uh, different members there, elders, uh, members of the family. The Northern Lights College and the Nowakian put on a very beautiful presentation. Um, it's, while it, it, it is a mournful day, it was nice to see how connected the, the, uh, community was and the work and collaboration that went into really acknowledging that meet, that day. So, if you've never gone, um, check it out, it is, you know, it's, it's, it's a really great opportunity to learn and to hear things from a different perspective. Ended that, um, and then, uh, on May sixth yesterday, I attended the Dawson Creek District Hospital, um, meeting, just got updates about what's going on, how things are looking, everything is looking great. And, uh, they're in the midst of doing a really cool artist call. So they have three different levels of art that they're gonna be looking for, one is sculptures and I thought about.
Mr. Maxon?
Mr. Maxon, there was Carl Maxon, thank you, there was sculptures that they're gonna be looking for. Um, another one is they're, they're doing feature walls throughout the hospital, there's twelve of them in total, with vinyl prints of photos that have been taken from around the region, so they're gonna be doing an artist call for that. Um, and then they're gonna be giving in a, um, a call for indigenous, like, plants and trees and that kind of things to really make, make sure that it's, it's all regional at least. So that's gonna be coming out, when those posters start coming out, I'm gonna share them so you guys can share them. And when they're looking for a sculptor, I'm thinking it's Carl Maxon. Um, and then, today, I met with our Dawson Creek RCMP, I met with staff and now I'm here. It's been a long week and exhausted, so, yeah. Do you have a question?
Just two real quick ones. Um, in regards to the library board, um, they're working through that grant and development and advancement and whatnot because they have a three-year grant and they've gotta spend some money within that timeline and they're investing in the library. That's all going, so.
Yeah, everything's going great.
And then, um, for the food bank, um, do they have enough funding to sustain themselves going forward? Or do they need more funding? I assume they always need donations and donations are always welcome. And hypothetically, if a local organization or area had a place that was frequented by folks, how would that organization approach the food bank about having a donation box at their location?
Yeah, no, um, the best way is honestly to reach out to the office staff here and they will connect you with the main person for the food bank, which is, um, Kayla. And, uh, we, we've worked with multiple different groups, the different schools, um, different businesses. The Village Office often has a drop-off box here as well that people drop, drop donation items off to and then I normally collect them and take them there myself.
Okay.
Um, and so there's, there's lots and lots of o- opportunity for that. We are always looking for donations and grants, we're currently working very closely with Mr. Ackerman, um, through the Village of Puscoopie to, um, continue to receive grant funding. And we are extremely supportive in, in the community, which we always appreciate, so, wonderful.
Yes.
Alright, we are gonna move on to question period, nobody's here. So, make the recommendation that council, um, boost to the closed meeting and pursuant to section ninety-one C, ninety-one E of the Canadian Char- Charter as the subject matter relates to labor relations and other violations and acquisition disposition and expropriation, I hate that word.
It's a fun one.
Of land or improvements, um, if council considers a disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality. Can I get a second or?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Woodall, all those in favor?
In favor.
All those opposed? Would you like your opposed noted?
No.
Just kidding.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna take.